I call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order town of Watertown. I'll do the roll. Rick Serandria here, Phil Rogers, Ned Dalton, Ben Giannetta.
Here.
Roger Mitchell.
Here.
Gary Swingle.
Here.
Jeff Franson.
Here.
Marie Genovese. Okay. Let's see, should I send someone in for Ned? Well, we don't even really need this. Oh, yeah, I do.
Mike, can you, can you take care of Ned to see if he can join?
Yes, if Mark could send me the text message over his email, I can send him invite.
I'm sorry, what are you looking for?
Ned Dalton wants to join, but he cannot do that. He doesn't have the link.
Yeah, does he have an email that you can text me, Mark, so I can send it off?
I don't have his email offhand.
Roseanne?
Roseanne.
How is that gonna do it?
Yes, I'll give it to you in a second. Let me find it.
Okay, Roseanne, I will send you a link, then you can pass it on to him.
Okay, that's fine. Can you send it to my cellphone?
Mr. Chairman, they pressed the record button, so maybe you want to just keep the meeting going for now?
Well, I'd have to sit these two guys. They'd probably have to sit one for Phil and one for Ned, if he's not here. Matt could do that. We only have one application. Why don't I do that? All right, Gary, you're gonna sit in for Phil Rogers and Jeff, you're gonna sit in for Ned Dalton. Let's start the meeting. Okay. I'm gonna start out. First off, I'm gonna start out talking about this Zoom meeting. This is a web-based virtual meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded both video and audio. Mark Masoud, the land use administrator, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video auto will be posted to the town's website. Most people attending this meeting will be muted. The commissioners and staff will not be muted, however, in order to minimize disruptive audio feedback. All participants should keep themselves on mute until ready to speak. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question or to make a presentation. Presentations may be made by applicants and their agents when appropriate and permitted by the commission. Other attendees will be permitted to speak only during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners and staff will generally be keep, will be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting, unless they are attending via telephone only. Applicants and members of the public should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, they will not be able to turn on their video when speaking. A person tells a thousand words and can be useful in conveying your meaning. If video is not available, you are, you will not be polluted from speaking on providing public testimony. During the public hearings, individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and add, name and give their home address. We will read the public hearing rules at the start of the first public hearing of the meeting. Please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature for the, for the meeting administrators to know that you've, you've raised your hand to speak. If an applicant or his, or their agent needs to submit additional documents to the commission, which was not distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, the application will be continued to the next meeting so that the new documents can be made available to the public. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing. If a member of the public speaks outside of a public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from this, from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the chair. Okay, now I'm gonna read the ground rules for this public hearing. The applicant or his representative will make his formal presentation to the board stating his specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variation from the, a variance from the zoning regulations of the town of Watertown. All comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. This is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clear legal transcription. All persons addressing the commission shall begin by first clearly stating their name and address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell his or her name for the record. Following the presentation of the application, the zoning board of appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. After the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I shall then allow any members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of this application or against it to address the board. I shall then allow the applicant to respond to the comments of the members of the general public. I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clarifying discussion to do so. I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these additional remarks if he or his representative so wishes. The zoning board of appeals has 35 days from the date of the public hearing commences to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a 35-day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires any additional information or wishes to schedule a sidewalk to observe the situation for themselves. The zoning board of appeals has 65 days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not make its decision tonight at its regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you, or you may leave at the end of the public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. Okay. Application number 2021.
There are two items before that acceptance of minutes?
I understand that. But, I mean, also, we have a review of the zoning board of appeals bylaws. I, I feel as though the applicant shouldn't have to hang around for that part of it, so I would like to get a motion to skip the old business portion, the, the approval of the minutes, and just go right into the new business. If that's okay with the board. We'll have a motion.
Motion is. New business.
Okay, I noticed Ned, Ned, are you on? Are you on board here? Ned?
He's muted.
Okay. All right, so who was sitting in?
I was, I was sitting in for Ned, so I'll, I'll, I'll step aside and Ned, Ned will take over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, so we're gonna go into new business, so I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go into new business. Application number 2021 of David McCarthy for a variance of 26 feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a detached carport to be located nine feet from the front property line at 32 Carson Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R 12.5 residential zoning district. Is someone here to represent? Well, I'll have the secretary read the legal notice.
The zoning board of appeals of town of Watertown will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, January 27th, 2021, as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application 2021-1 of David McCarthy for a variance of 26 feet to front yard property line setback for construction of a detached carport to be located nine feet from front property line at 32 Carson Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R 12.5 residential zoning district. Section 12.8 of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum 35 feet setback for an accessory structure in an R 12.5 residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 14th day of January 2021, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 21st day of January 2021. There was Dalton Secretary, zoning board of appeals.
Is there someone here to represent the applicant? We can't hear you.
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's David McCarthy. I live at 32 Carson Avenue in Oakville, Connecticut.
Okay, can you explain to us why you are asking for a variance on this application?
Oh, yes. So I'm looking to construct a carport. I like to construct it where I currently have my two cars. If I could describe my neighborhood a little bit, it's Carson is a side street off of Buckingham. It's very close to John Tremble School. It's an older neighborhood, so most of the homes are older and they're set closer to the street. There's two newer homes, me and my adjacent neighbor. Our homes are about 51, just over 51 feet setback from the street because there's a 16-foot right away between the property line and the street. So even though I'm asking for a very significant variance, the carport would still be 25 feet away from the street. I did submit some photos and on the back page of one of the photos, it shows the neighbor's house. You'll see that his house is very close to the street. It's probably about 15 feet. That's my neighbor, Joe Pletta. He owns the house. He's actually, has also submitted a letter saying that he's in favor of the carport. So I don't think the carport would have any harm, wouldn't be out of character for the neighborhood. When you look at all the houses on the other side of the street, they're basically all very similar in terms of proximity to the street. There's also a, a two-guard, two-car detached garage at the end of the street. That's about less than 10 feet from the street. I've spoken to my neighbors on both sides of me. That's Rose and Dave Butcher. They also supported it and they signed and delivered a letter. I also spoke to Mark, or, excuse me, Ranko. I spoke to him. He has no issue with the carport. He actually indicated he was gonna send a letter. Excuse me. But I don't think Moose has received it at this point. The way the house is positioned, there's basically a 51, I have a very large front car between the street and my garage door is just over 51 feet. I have grass area on the side of the house, which is approximately at 40 feet, but once you factor in the sidewalk and the landscaping, it's actually narrower. And then my backyard's approximately 30 feet. I really want to place the carport where I currently park and that's, you can actually see it in the photos if that's helpful. I think it's the logical place to put it. It minimizes the amount of asphalt. I really don't want to lose my side yard. It allows me to keep the green area. The carport would be approximately 24 by 22. It would be designed up in keeping with the house, so it's meant to be attractive. You know, the house is occupied both by me and my mother and my college-age son, so I, I'm trying to keep it convenient, aesthetic. I don't know if there's any questions.
So what is your hardship?
The hardship is the, the way my yard is configured. And the 16-foot setback from the street makes it very hard to place a carport.
Okay, but is the picture here that I'm looking at for the car parked on the side, is that your house that has a two-car garage?
It does.
So, if you have a two-car garage.
So.
Where do you need the car?
So my, my mother lives in my house with me, so there's my mother's car, there's my son's car, and then I have two cars. I have a car that stays in, a seasonal car that stays in the garage. So, and my mother basically uses the garage in the winter and then parks, basically, in the, like where the blue Subaru is during the summer.
Hey, now, if you put this carport up, what would you do? Drive through it to get to your backyard or?
Oh, no, it would be positioned on the side. I think it shows, there's basically two site plans. One is.
Well, they're kind of dark, so I really can't. Go ahead.
So it's positioned on the side, so where the blue Subaru is parked in the first photo, or the, on the second page, that would be approximately in that location. It would actually be set three feet closer to the house versus where the current. Right now, there's an asphalt turnaround and that's where two cars park.
So those trees would be staying there, basically is where those trees are?
That tree that you see in the background is actually right on the property line between me and my neighbor. That stays, all the landscaping stays, that's in the front on the street. My, my yard is heavily landscaped. So there's bushes that are behind, behind the buffer between my neighbor and the stockade fence, or.
The carport would be over the top of the turnaround then?
Correct.
Moose, I just have a quick question. I'm looking at the, the diagram that's drawn that shows the piece of property and the zoning lines. And, and would I, do I understand it correctly? If, if the gentleman moved the carport back so the, so say lined up with the front of his house, he'd have enough room to put it on, I think it's probably the east side of the house, adjacent to the garage. He could, he would, he would not need a variance if he put, put the carport there. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, because the garage is 24 by 22 and only he needs five feet from the side property line.
Right, so he could, he could put it on the side without, without a variance or?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions from, any questions from the board?
So you'd be approximately 20, you'd be 16, right? About 25 feet to the road itself from the carport?
Oh, correct. I didn't actually realize until I was measuring where the actual property line was versus the right away. I found that process out while doing the submission.
Moose, did you want to take a look at this?
Mr. Chairman, yes, actually, I was there today and I met with the property owner. I walked the property and I saw that there is a turnaround next to the driveway and it's already paved. Just want to put a proof over it. But as, as Jeff said, that there is room on the side of the house and I think the applicant should explain that why he cannot put it there.
I think it's for a few reasons. One, I think it harms the aesthetics. I actually don't think the carport would look attractive. I think it would be, it would look like it's squished between the house and the property line. It would increase the amount of asphalt. I would lose basically all my side yard. And right now, I would like to keep the green area because I actually think that's much more attractive versus creating much more asphalt. And I know my next-door neighbor, the, the vouchers, they, I think they have a preference on keeping it where I park my cars because their deck overlooks that area. I know that can't be a consideration, but I think when you see the property, I think it makes sense for where I would like to place it.
I'd like to hear. I'd like to hear impervious areas.
Do you have the letters that were sent in?
Because they asked. Green card, the green cards.
Record as well, I believe, right?
Mr. Chairman, the green cards, the green cards came to the office. We have them in the file.
Okay.
And also there is a letter from Mr. Pletta, Joe Pletta. He's one of the property owners, abutting property owners. It is in the packet. And if Mr. Dalton can read that into the record?
I didn't notice that.
Maybe I didn't see it.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't get any letters, Moose.
I can read it. I have it here. It is in the file.
Want to read that?
Maybe we got it, maybe we got it after we send the packet to you.
Okay.
To read it?
Sure.
It says, January 202020. Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Watertown, hearing, January 27th. To whom it may concern, I, Giuseppe Pletta, own the house at 35 Carson Avenue in Oakville. I support my neighbor's request to build a carport and his front side yard. My neighbor maintains his yard and house to a high level and the carport will be a positive benefit for our homes in the area. Joseph Giuseppe Pletta.
Now, it said he owns the house, does he live in the house as well?
I don't think so. I don't think so, no. It is a rental property, I believe.
Correct.
The rental.
And there's also a letter from Dave and Rose Butcher. I don't know if that's in the, in the record either.
Let me check.
That was with the original dropping off of the application.
I don't have it here, but.
It was dated December 18th.
Yeah. I have all the documents in the file with me, but I'm looking for that letter. Let me see. No, I don't have it.
Moose, I have one more, one other question, if I may?
Sure.
Just clarify, the gentleman is proposing a carport and, but we're, we're giving him, we would be giving him a variance on a structure. So if, if a future, if someone in the future wanted to build a two-car garage, they could build a two-car garage in that location with this variance. Is that correct?
Yes, all they have to do is just put walls around it and.
Put walls up and, right, okay.
Once you issued a permit, a variance, that will stays with the property.
Correct.
We could, we could put conditions on it though, couldn't we? That has to remain a carport?
It doesn't make sense because once, once the structure is there, what, what difference it makes if it has walls up now?
Well, I'm fine with the restriction. Like, my intent is to have a carport. I don't want a garage. I don't think the garage will look as well either, so.
No, but, but this, but this variance is for life, so it, you know, it stays with the property, that's all, Mr. McCarthy.
Okay.
Moose, if I could try a question?
Go ahead, Gary.
Did we not discuss once, or did you not, we have a situation about parking in the front yard or something? Can you clarify that with me? Yeah, we're asking, he's asked for a variance for a structure, but does that allow parking in the front yard? Or are they in conflict?
Once you, you give the variance, that they can have that, but right now, they have a turnaround. They are, they are parking their two cars there.
So you, so there's no zoning problem with them parking in the front?
It is a single-family home and it's just that that's a part of the driveway. You have to have a turnaround in order to turn. If it was a two or three-family home, then the parking spaces cannot be in the front yard. But that is existing.
Single family doesn't protect single family?
I'm sorry?
Did you say it's only for two or three family homes?
No, we, we regulate those, but, but when we, when people submit an application for a single-family home with a driveway in the front with a turnaround, we approve it.
Okay.
Okay, does any, does anyone else from the commission have any questions for the applicant? Guys all set?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment. In case if you want to put restrictions, you can do that with the.
Okay.
It's up to the board, yes.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
What's your motion?
To close the public hearing.
A motion to close.
Yes, do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. You want to, guys want to go right into the regular meeting? Okay, the first thing on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes from.
Mr. Chairman, since you, you wanted to take care of this application first before you go into that, then you want to go and take care of the application first and then?
Yeah, we could do it. You guys want to do that? This way he doesn't have to stay, stay on? Okay, on their new business, application number 2021 of David McCarthy for a variance of 26 feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a detached carport to be located nine feet from the front property line at 32 Carson Avenue, Oakville, Connecticut, and an R 12.5 residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. I don't know. I mean, it's, it seems pretty cut and dry. I mean, it does have nice property there and I guess if he really needs, wants, really wants to have a carport, it's not really encroaching on anybody. And I can understand him, you know, we suggested he set it back, but like the gentleman had stated, that he would be putting more pavement, which we don't really like. We'd rather have impervious area than pavement. So I guess there's no other place for him to put that, but where he wants to put it there and he needs it, I guess, for his family to be able to park and be undercover. So.
Could put up a temporary structure with, he could put up a temporary structure without asking us.
Yeah, you can do that.
This is a lot nicer than that.
Right. It is a nice structure. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
I see what the amount of frontage he has there, he's still gonna be a good distance off the road. It's not gonna be nine feet from the road. It's gonna be, I don't know, I remember the numbers, but I think it's 26 feet from the edge moving to the street.
Right, right. Okay. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application, which I missed it during our public hearing? But if, if there is, is there anyone like to speak for or against this application? Anyone who'd like to speak for or against this application? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a sec, there's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You're all set.
Who said, who said aye? Can you please mention your name, please?
Mention our name? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Roseanne, you were able to get it?
Good.
I did, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All set, sir?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Unanimous? It was unanimous?
Yes, motion passed.
Yes, okay.
Okay, acceptance, acceptance of minutes, regular meeting, September 23rd, 2020, and regular meeting, November 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Accept them, acceptance of minutes, regular meeting, September twenty third, twenty twenty, and regular meeting, November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, old business. Review of zoning board of appeals bylaws. Who wants to start that? Musa or Mark? Where's Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to, um, have, um, a little bit of, uh, uh, a further discussion with the, uh, with the commission, if I if I may, with regards to uh, the proposed, uh, proposed changes, um, to the bylaws. Um. I had, just for everybody's sake, um, I had a couple of conversations with, uh, with Rick, uh, yesterday and and today. And just to, uh, um, kind of go back, um, a little bit. Um, so at the September meeting, um, there was some discussion that centered around uh, the form and the content, the form of the minutes and the content of uh, of packets that are received by the by the commission. Um, and it was, um, pointed out that, um, and and I guess it's fair to say that the commission, uh, some of the commission members were um, a bit, um, a bit, um, I guess I'll say upset for lack of a better term um, in terms of changes that had taken place uh, without the, uh, without the chair and without the commission, um, fully understanding um, what was, uh, what was behind them. Um, and and, um, you know, I acknowledge that and and said that, um, you know, the a lot of, some of those changes have taken place, uh, because of changes in in COVID and their and the meetings taking place in a, on a, on a virtual basis. Um, and some changes that had taken place in an effort to, uh, improve some, um, office efficiencies. Uh, so, uh, members wanted to, uh, insert into the bylaws some language that, uh, I guess I'll say codified, uh, some of the codified the um, changes they'd like to, uh, like to see in how information is presented. Um, so we had a little bit of discussion about that and uh, I think we came to a reasonable agreement in terms of the, uh, of the minutes. Uh, and you've requested, uh, language to say something, uh, to the effect that you get, um, uh, sufficient information to to make, uh, to understand uh, when looking back at the minutes, uh, what the basis of decisions were. Um. And the second part of that was, uh, uh, I guess I'll again quote a requirement for paper packets uh, to everybody, um, five days prior to the meeting. So if I if I may, I just wanted to make some comments, um, on that and maybe provide a little bit of, um, explanation or kind of background as to um, further background as to why, um, um, why things are are going in that in that direction, which is to provide, uh, a little bit more digital, uh, type, uh, information. Um, so I guess my proposal is, and you don't have anything in front of you, so I'm just expressing this verbally, is to, uh, maybe modify that language, um, that goes into the bylaws to allow the, um, to allow a a little bit of choice to folks in terms of how they might want to receive um, their packet, whether it be paper or or digital. And and I get it. Most most folks, I think, currently on the commission will will prefer to get, will prefer to get um, uh, paper, uh, applications, paper packets from from what I understand. And and I really don't, you know, I think as the as the administrator have any, I don't have any issues, um, with that. Um, but, um, um, I'd like to make a request to, uh, maybe, um, provide some additional language that might give a choice to to folks, um, so that, um, the office can provide, uh, you know, kind of either or as as the preference might be and, um, kind of allow for the fact that maybe future members or maybe members, you know, currently might might not care or might want it, you know, in a form other than paper and allow us to, you know, kind of have that, um, have that option. Um, I don't know if I'm kind of splitting hairs here, but since, um, since you guys made a request to have it put into the bylaws, you know, and it becomes a a bit codified, um, I wanted to just bring that up and 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 get some, uh, and get some feedback, uh, from you. Um. Also, I might, uh, make a make a suggestion that, um, um, since since you want to and put it into the into the into the bylaws, that there just be some recognition, um, that virtual meetings are, you know, are more commonplace and acknowledge that uh, information is put up, uh, for the commission's benefit and for the for the public's benefit um, in a in a digital manner, um, on the town website for for folks to, uh, for folks, uh, to to access, you know, when they when they actually can't, uh, be at a meeting. Um, I also wanted to, and I'll try to be brief about this. You know, um, let let the the commission know that, uh, you know, where I'm coming from is that in in this, in this, uh, where we're at, um, today with um, with modernization, um, most things are moving in a in a digital manner. Um, the commission is, uh, the land use office is in the process of implementing, um, municity, a digital uh, online, um, permit application process, um, that only not only will take uh, applications in, uh, online and and without paper, but it's also going to, uh, include taking in, uh, variance application, zoning, zoning board applications, inland wetland applications and, uh, and site plan, uh, site plan and special permit applications. Uh, so folks are going to have the ability to to fill them out and and submit them online. Uh, so, I mean, that's that's part of the reason and and the and the other boards, a lot of the other boards, and I think the town council is moving uh, towards digital submissions and digital, uh, review of their information as well. I get it. I know it's a, it's kind of a long term process, but I guess I just wanted to, um, have, um, to to let it be known where where I'm coming from, uh, in terms of, uh, making a, um, you know, a push towards uh, or or pushing towards, uh, towards a digital, uh, digital review and digital uh, submission of of information. Uh, and and just wanting to maybe, again, if you want, if you want something in the bylaws to kind of acknowledge that that's, um, you know, happening, that's, um, you know, occurring and give, uh, give folks, uh, uh, kind of an opening and a little bit of a choice as to, um, how they might want to, how they might want to receive the information.
I have a couple of comments relative to that. I think some of what you said make, most of what you said makes sense to me, and I'll tell you why, is that if you have a choice of getting personally right now, where I am sitting right now, I prefer to have paper in front of me because it makes it very easy. I thought I had a couple of files open on my computer and I want to review them before. And for some reason, I either closed them out or lost them or whatever the case may be. And it's it's a lot easier to look at hard copies versus shuffling between copies on your computer, especially if you want to look at something side by side. It's not as easy when you have to shrink them to look at side by side. But the other factor is, a lot of people work remotely now, and if I were living in Florida, not living in Florida, but on vacation, I wanted to join this meeting, I'd want something digitally because you may have mailed a package to my home. Okay? And in order to join that meeting and be, you know, beneficial to get it digitally, so uh, there are so many people working remotely today, then that's that's a benefit of that digital presentation. But living in Watertown and, uh, joining the meeting, I prefer to have hard copies because it makes it a lot, a lot easier. That's my personal, uh, opinion. But also, I'm not sure exactly where we're going to be if one day we go back to a meeting in the, uh, at the high school. I mean, nobody's gonna, everybody's not going to have the computer in front of them to look at all this information digitally. So I suspect that we'd probably have to go back to hard copies there anyways, even if we share them some way, shape or form. Uh, do you take virtual checks when you have to fill out an application, Mark?
Uh, we will, actually.
It's a joke.
Well, actually, there will be, there's an online payment system, so, um, it's it's really not, um, somebody will be able to uh, input credit card information and pay for their, uh, pay for the permits, um, online.
I don't want a credit card.
It's not, it's not so much of a joke.
I want a virtual check.
Yeah.
As I, as I, when I talked to Mark today, I I had mentioned that, you know, going back a few years back, we already reviewed this whole situation and and I thought at the time we discussed, uh, having some people, if they wanted it uh, digital, they could have it. If they wanted hard copies, they could have it, which, um, you know, Mark had mentioned today and again tonight that, um, the council is going digital. Well, the the council is like an office type meeting. Uh, I think land use boards should really have the hard copies because, you know, like Vinnie just, uh, stated, I mean, we we need to look at it and and be able to compare. You know, I mean, and and sometimes we even draw on these, uh, on these plans and cross things out or saying, you know, maybe you should put the driveway here or, you know, we we never know. I mean, so the hard copy works a lot better than a PDF as far as, uh, land use. I don't know about any other boards, but the land use boards. And I talked to some fellows from the other boards, land use boards too, and they're pretty much saying the same thing. I mean, I know what you mentioned today, planning and zoning probably gets a lot more paperwork than we do. But, um, you know, here again, you got guys that are volunteering their time and, you know, they they put their effort into it. And if they're asking for something simply like getting a hard copy versus, uh, digital, I think we should accommodate it. And like I even mentioned today, just like Vinnie, if not, maybe you should get us all, uh, lap laptops and we bring it to the meetings. I mean, you know, it's it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation.
Yeah, that wouldn't work for me because I don't, I, a lot of people live on their computer. I run this one maybe once a week. I went through one mine the other day. I got four thousand messages on there. I mean, there's no, I could lose these guys real easy. Yep.
Well, I don't, I don't think Mark is saying you can't have it. Is that correct, Mark?
No, that's correct. I'm just, uh, wanting if you're if you're going to codify it, um, I just want there, uh, I'm requesting that there be some um, some flexibility in terms of recognizing that uh, information is provided in more than than one form. Um, and that, um, you know, the office have the flexibility to, um, to provide it in in a couple of, uh, different manners. Um, and and this is not to say that, you know, again, you you guys want, uh, want paper forms right now and that's and that's fine. I don't think you know, anybody has a problem with it. Um, there there were, and again, just for background, right, there were some, when I first came here, um, and it's not the, it's not you guys, it's other other commissions. Uh, the, I mentioned this to Rick. The admins would literally spend almost the whole day making packets to send out to other boards. And what they would do, the practice was, even though they, even though the commission had received applications prior in prior months, we would make multiple copies of the same application each month and repeatedly send it out to, uh, folks. Uh, when you start multiplying that times, you know, a couple of different commissions, um, the staff becomes consumed by doing that. Um, and part of, um, you know, when I, when I came was to look at things like that and say, no, that's really not necessary to do, especially in this day and age. So, um, again, I guess you guys are generally pretty good. You don't see that many, um, applications. You don't receive like a huge amount of paperwork. And again, the issue was really not providing, ironically enough, I thought the issue was more minutes, you know, back then. I'm not, I'm not really clear that you guys have never, you know, not received um, paper, but we talked about it. It was a bit of an issue and, uh, there's really, you know, I'm here to say there's really no no, no issue at this point with with providing you guys with, uh, with what you want. I'm just trying to provide some background because you don't see like what other commissions kind of go through and what the office staff needs to do to, you know, kind of prepare, uh, and send things out. Um, and then so if we receive digital applications for variances, so ironically enough, we'll be in the position of turning them back into paper and then mailing them back out. You know, so it's kind of ironic and in one sense, and again, I get what everybody's saying. It kind of defeats the reason or the purpose for going for going digital, but it's an evolution, you know, I I get it. People, um, have a have a need. I go through that. I go through that myself. Vin, what you just said, you know, you try to bring a couple of things up on a on a laptop and you'll lose them. And I I myself wind up making paper copies and and using them and it's a, it's an effort. It takes a lot of effort to use things in just a digital fashion. Um, so I, again, I understand what folks are talking about, um, but, um, the drive in the future is towards digital and I just want to keep the a bit of flexibility in there. And I'm not saying, you know, the bylaws aren't like the constitution, you know, it's not like they'll never, they'll never change again. Um, so, you know, tell me if I'm being like kind of overly, uh, overly concerned, but, um, that's 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 what I wanted to discuss and bring up to you.
Well, well, maybe a net portion of the bylaws are just sitting here thinking now. I mean, I don't know if it's all right with the rest of you guys. Maybe we could put in there that, um, what we what we discussed that if members of the commission wanted digital, they can get it, you know, word it somehow, and if they want paper, we can get it. So that's, so your concern really is that we're not all going to live forever. And, you know, I mean, somewhere down the road, you know, uh, the younger generation today, they just do stuff on their phone in about two seconds and they got it. So, I mean, I I don't know if the rest of the commission would be in favor of that, that maybe put that in there in the bylaws that we could get it both ways. We can get it digital and we can get it paper.
I I think I'm, I think I'm okay with that as long as it's the a commission member's decision and not the administrator's decision how they're going to provide it.
I understand. You know, some of the, some of the. We went through that two days in a row, Mark, right?
Yes, we did. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to, um, you know, to dictate or force, um, things down anybody's, uh, throat, so to speak. Um, just again, looking for some flexibility. Um, and and initially I was, you know, kind of wondering why you wanted it in the bylaws, but again, I, you know, I think I understand. And if you're, you know, if you're, if you want, if you want that language in the bylaws, uh, I'm just looking for some flexibility and I'm not looking to, you know, to put it, uh, to, uh, to force, um, um, force anything that you don't want or or need.
You know, there's, there's also some things that, um, I don't really care if I get it or not. I don't know if you're trying to save some money, well, save some money as well. I don't care if I get a roll call. You know, I don't care. Pardon me? Yeah.
Only one commissioner needs it.
Yeah, I don't need, uh, I can read the, uh, zoning, uh, quarterly newsletter online, things like that. I I think most of us, and I'm not speaking for all of us, but I think most of us would just want to see, you know, the major applications with the drawings and, uh, you know, all of that kind of stuff. Because it just makes life easier than screwing around with a mouse and computer and a pointer and all that kind of stuff. That's all. That's all, by the way.
I like all of the stuff in in paper. I I do read the quarterly newsletter. I don't read on the computer. Um, I like getting the minutes on paper because if we're in the meeting, like Vinnie, I think you said before, we can't, we're not allowed to look at our phone or our iPad or anything. We're we're not supposed to have that with us. So, once we go back to regular meetings, you're not going to be able to see any of this stuff. So we need to have it in on paper in front of us.
Well.
I like the minutes, full minutes, verbatim and on paper.
Well, I was going to say another thing, which I discussed with Mark too. I mean, um, when we go back to in person, for instance, when we go to the meeting, Musa hands me the, uh, ground rules for the for the meeting. And we also get handed the, uh, the roll call and then we hand it back to them. So right now, the problem we have is just right now, as the way we're running these meetings, it's easier to have this in front of you than than than, you know, when you're when you're meeting in person.
Yeah, well, and what about the times that, uh, you know, last minute, uh, the applicant brings in another drawing that Musa hands out to us at, you know, at that meeting?
Right, we can't do it right now. Yeah, you're right.
I mean, I think all of us could hang on to the roll call, the the.
And the ground rules. That's what I've been doing.
Rules and the meeting rules and all that. If we all keep one copy of it, that's.
Right now, that's what I've been doing because I was used to going to the meeting and just Musa handing it out, handing you the roll call and handing me the ground rules. And then we hand it back. But for right now, that's what I've been doing. I've been keeping it because I don't know this brown rule thing by heart. And plus you got to read the, the thing about the Zoom.
The other thing I'd like to say, you know, a case that gets carried over from one month to the next, you can always keep that packet separate from the rest and just add it into the pile. So that's eight to 10 pages you don't have to print again.
Well, you know, the other thing is too, guys, you got to feel free that if you've got something, one sheet of paper or something missing that you're, that's bothering you, you could always just call the office and I'm sure they'll, they'll send something out to you or you can stop down and pick it up. Because I've done that myself several times. That, you know, I've looked at, I say, wow, how come I don't have this or that? And, and you can go there and they'll, they'll get it to you. But, but the basic thing is, I think what Mark is trying to get at is with this bylaw thing that, you know, we should iron this out so that, you know, everyone's happy. And I think the best thing, like, I don't know if you guys agree with, that we put it in there that we want, that if certain members wanted virtue, wanted paper, they get it. And if certain members wanted, don't mind getting it digital, they get it. So this way here, it's in there and I don't know, how do you guys feel about that? I mean, that's the only, I just.
Okay with me.
I came up with that, I, I came up with that idea just now, so.
Something?
Sure, go ahead.
You don't have it, but I can briefly draft up, and I'll get it to you in the next couple of days, just some minor revisions to, to Jeff, what you proposed last time. And you can review it and make changes and, and talk about it next month. Okay. Go ahead, Musa, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are board review your bylaws every February, every year. That is when the
Right.
Election of officers and also review of your bylaws.
Right.
We're going to put that on the agenda for next one for you and Mr. Masood can come up with a language. And at the next meeting, you can discuss it and then make some changes. But we already put the language that you approved last time at the last meeting. And this time I will give it to Mark to just look at that and see if he wants to make the, some changes. We presented to in February meeting anyway, because that is the time that you approve your bylaws every year. And also you do the election of officers.
Okay.
And one other thing that I'm asking the commission members, the, the board members, that if there is an application that you want to carry that for next month, please keep the packet for next month. We are not going to send you again the same application. That is one thing that really it is a repeat of like they're wasting time and resources. If you make a decision that night, that will be the end of that packet. But if you want to table the action on, on an application and you want to decide on it next month, please keep that packet for your next month meeting.
Well.
If we get any new, any new information, we will send it to you. But we are not going to repeat the same application and the same plans again and send it to you.
Well, especially if we, if we schedule a sidewalk, you probably should keep that application.
Yeah, just, just hold on to that packet until next month and then once.
Until it's approved.
After that, yes.
Till it's approved or denied.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Yeah, I think what Roger said.
Something's open, just carry it to the next meeting.
Yes, that's something that I, I, I hope that all the members do that.
You know, I got one other thing I'd like to discuss. I don't know if we could talk about this right now. You tell me. That house on Farview. What's going on with that? The one we denied? I mean, that's kind of a death trap there.
Farview?
Farview. The one that the guy tried to turn it into a two-family house.
Yes, they.
There's nothing going on there. It's kind of a, it's kind of a, you know, a kind of hazard property, I think. I mean, I go by there once in a while just to see what's going on. Actually, I go down to Cavalllo's to get a sandwich. You know, that porch, the whole, I mean, is there something we could do to kind of shore that place up or have them put a fence around it or something? I mean, I don't know if that's out of our, out of our charge, but.
If it is a, if it's a blight issue, I can discuss it with the blight officer if there is some.
It's not really a blight. I think it's more or less a
Hazard.
Hazard.
The building inspector will look at that. I will talk to them.
Yeah, we should have the building inspector look at that.
Yeah, because I mean, the porch.
Aren't instructed to have a footing under it.
Right. As I just said, there's a two-story porch that's sitting on a cinder block. I mean, if somebody goes over there, they're going to get hurt. I don't think we'd be liable, but, you know.
Well, the building inspector can take care of that. I will talk to him.
Okay.
Yes.
And can we go back to bylaw, just, just real quick? You know, I, I, I look at, I look at who's at the meetings here and, you know, there's a number of members that haven't been on and one is like Phil Roger. I, I called Phil to see how he was doing. And, you know, there's times that he has difficulty getting on. He has an older computer. It doesn't work. He, he's had some internet issues at his house. And I'm concerned that, you know, if the town council or the town manager starts to look at attendance of, of meetings, of who's attending, you know, planning, you know, ZBA meetings and all that stuff. I, I think we need to have some flexibility if technology prevents us from getting on to a meeting. You know, it, it, you know, he said to me, you know, I, I can go to the meetings, no problem, because I just walk into the meeting hall. I know when to go. And he said, if you, if you look at his attendance, it's, it's very, very good, which it is. I, I don't, I'm just throwing it out there whether we should consider something like that.
Well, I think during this virus, I mean, what can you do? You know, I mean, we're, we're all trying to do the best we can. And I, I think, I don't think anything, I don't think anything, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn maybe, but I don't think anything could really happen to any of the commission members if they're not allowed to, if they can't, they don't have any way of.
Oh, that's fine, Rick. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, sure. You know, because he's an old member.
So he, he, he's a long-term member, has a lot of knowledge or anyone else, Rick. You know, I mean, like, like an hour ago, I didn't have internet, you know, and I wasn't, wasn't sure that I was going to be able to get on. And, you know, 15 minutes before the meeting, it came back. So it just, that's what sort of tipped me off, you know?
Well, look at me. I'm up my girlfriend's house in Woodbury. Because my, my laptop doesn't have a camera.
Yeah, so.
So I come here every week.
Well, I still, I missed a couple of meetings because the, the Webber, I couldn't get on the site at all. It would let me.
Right, right.
Gary Swingle, there's, Gary Swingle, there's no excuse for you now. When you're in Florida, you got it.
There he is. We got him.
As you've probably seen, this is, this Zoom is a, is a much more user-friendly platform than, than the go-to webinar was. We had horrible problems with getting on to go to webinar, presented a whole host of issues in these meetings, this meeting, as others we've conducted on Zoom have been, I dare say relatively, relatively hassle-free. So that's been a huge improvement in my opinion.
It is. It's good. It's really good.
Speaking as a non-computer person, this was the easiest site meeting I've ever had attend with the computer or even the telephone. The telephone couldn't even get through like it was muted.
Yeah, sure. I could get, I could get on this on my phone too.
I heard you put a couple hundred thousand dollars into the stock market for Zoom, Roger. Is that true?
Wish I could.
Okay.
I got honest, it scared me. I thought I did something wrong.
I'll just say, Mark, thanks for the dialogue. You know, I, I think we better understand, you know, where you're coming from and what you're trying to do. I think we're more than willing to work with you and, and, you know, I think we'll get something in there that we, we all can live with.
Thanks. I, I appreciate it. I think the town is moving towards helping commissioners. And I'm not sure exactly where this, where this goes. But eventually getting additional electronic devices such as iPads for more, for more general use. But we can keep you updated about that.
Okay.
It wouldn't be too old to be on the commission for mine.
All right, we have one more. Are we all set? Because we have one more item here at our, at our regular meeting. Is everybody set with this? Okay. Our next thing is commission, communications and bills.
You, you need a motion to table action under review of the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get them? Can I entertain a motion to, to table the review of the zoning board of appeals bylaws? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next item on the agenda is communications and bills. Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter, Winter 2021, Volume 25, Issue One. I guess you guys, you read it. Do you want to make a motion that we file it and?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add another item to the agenda under communications and bills.
Go ahead.
Should I just tell you what it is or you want to make a motion?
Go ahead, tell me what it is.
The Connecticut Board Association, they have an education and training program for land use commissions every year. And normally they have that seminars and Wesleyan University, and which is an all-day seminar. And there are some interesting discussions there about the zoning board of appeals, planning and zoning in inland wetland. This year's seminar is virtual and it will be on March 6th from, from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And but, and if anybody is interested, please let me know that I can register you for that seminar. If you remember, I think one year you and Mr. Frankson, they, they went and it was a very useful seminar. There's like three issues that they are discussing for zoning board of appeals. If anybody is interested, please let me know as soon as you can that I can register you. The cost of attending that meeting is forty, forty dollar per person and they will send you a book for the seminar.
Now, that's March 6th.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll let you know.
It is a Saturday from 9:00 to 4:30 and it will be virtual, not in person.
That's a lot.
You can, you can call the office and let us know if you're interested.
That's, that's a lot of whiskey at one time.
But you don't have to sit through the.
Vinnie, do I can stay still that long?
I'm sorry?
He knows we could. Do I can stay still that long?
I think there are like three sessions that is interested to zoning board of appeals. One is concerning the zoning board of appeals. They will discuss that.
Well, find out what time that comes on.
Conflict of interest and predisposition. That is something that all commission members should understand what they should do about it. And also the, the procedural issues on municipal land use process. And these three sessions are beneficial to your members. And if you want, you don't have to sit there from 9:00 to 4:30. You can only sit on those three sessions.
Okay.
But let me know if anybody is interested.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on communications and bills?
Motion we accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Do I have a motion to, is there anything else that anybody would like to discuss before we adjourn? You guys all set? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, fellas. That was interesting.
Good night.
Have a nice night.